To conduct the business. It is exactly 6:01 PM this evening. TJ Wilkerson, could we please ask you to start us off with the invocation?
Well, we come thanking you for this opportunity that you've given us. Thank you, Lord, for keeping us. Thank you for our health and strength. But we pray not only for this city, the leaders of this city. We pray for our nation and the leaders of this nation. Lord bless us and watch over us if we go forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Is the Pledge of Allegiance? We'll start off with the United States Pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
And to the Republic.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Justiceful.
The Texas flag?
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
There's nothing's been submitted for the visitor and citizens forum, so we'll move straight to business, beginning with the consent agenda. Number one on your agenda, matters related to the approval of minutes of December 22nd, 2020, special meeting and January 12th, 2021, regular meeting. Counsel, there's only one of them.
I make a motion that we accept these minutes as they're presented.
It has been noted and seconded that we accept this item as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
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 Those opposed, they no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Consideration of possible action, number two on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on department reports. A, the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The COVID-19 pandemic came to our attention in January and February as a potential issue last year. At the point it originally came forward, it was a general planning item, but it wasn't certainly nothing that we expected to blow up the way it did ultimately in the month of March. It resulted in emergency changes to the very nature of how almost everything was done in the city. That emergency situation officially continues to this day and is going forward. I'd like to let everyone know, you know, how proud I am of the entire staff of the city's responded to these changes. They found ways to provide the necessary services to the public during this period. And during some of these changes, I believe we found ways to be more effective and will look to make some of those changes permanent, even after this emergency period ends. But I wanted to specifically start my report, having ended a very difficult year, giving credit where it's due, and that's to my department heads and to the city staff in general. During these difficulties, the city ended the year with a strong economy and did increase in both residential and commercial activity. Despite a temporary slowdown in the early days of the pandemic, Montgomery is forging ahead with growth many ways and is laying the foundation for a strong and successful future. In 2020, the city issued 11 new business certificates of occupancy, representing approximately 20,000 square feet of new commercial space. Seventy-five certificates of occupancy were issued for new residential sites, representing approximately 198,000 square feet of new living space. Estimated 150,000 square feet of this was new single-family housing, with the remainder being a combination of multifamily and limited mobile home housing in the city's one mobile home park. As a result of the continuing development, 54 new utility accounts were added to the city of Montgomery's utility system during the course of the calendar year. All city offices remain open for regularly scheduled hours and remain so through the bulk of the pandemic. For members of the general public who did not want or still do not want to come to City Hall related to individual services, we have changed some of our operating conditions and methods so that we are prepared to handle their communications with us through other forms, such as telephone, email, you know, even Zoom conferences as necessary. A large number of our planning meetings that used to take place with engineers and developers in person, a number of them now take place via either Zoom or Microsoft Teams or other technology, in a way allowing us, I believe, to be much more effective and efficient in how we conduct some of those meetings, definitely efficient in not requiring us sometimes to travel to and from those locations and still conduct business. In 2020, I'd like to point out several long-term priorities that were concluded. The home grant was brought to a successful conclusion with four new homes built for qualifying city residents. The city's first modern comprehensive plan was approved. A study was conducted to improve the drainage on the northern 149 corridor, which will be followed up with improvements funded by a grant from the General Land Office. Construction work for wastewater improvements was completed that allowed the shops of Montgomery Development, including perhaps most notably to most residents of the area, Chick-fil-A, which was anxiously awaited by many city residents. Two additional construction projects were awarded by the city in late 2020. These will primarily work towards increasing our production and distribution capacity within the city's water system, which is a very important component of preparing for our future growth and future development. Finally, the MEDC awarded a contract to move the city's downtown development and streetscape planning to the next level, following the conceptual designs from the Texas A&amp;M Landscape Architecture Students and the Texas Sea Grant Program, and they will be taking that towards the next step of planning. I finalized the names for the city's Parks Advisory Committee, which will meet and work with the Public Works Director in a capacity similar to how the Technical Operations Review Committee works with me in planning items. I'm pleased to say that we had more people interested than the spots we have available. So if any of the members should desire to leave the committee, we've got names ready to go to fill those spots. And perhaps other things will come forward later. If we can't use those people in this capacity, we certainly will find a way to use people who are interested with their civic spirit. The initial appointees to this committee are Cheryl Fox, Shirley Nicholas, Amy Brown, Mike Newman, and Don Carter. I'd also like to point out that a staff committee has completed interviews of engineering firms that came from the review, from the statements of qualifications on city engineering request from the posting. And I'll touch base on that towards the end of my report with a recommendation there. I would like to briefly quickly point out to let people know, I am planning to use some vacation time later this year, sometime in late March and April, as well as for a longer family vacation in October. I will provide more information to City Council when I have specific plans in place. I'll also be planning to attend the second round of city management training in March that was planned until recently to be a live conference. It's now been rescheduled to a virtual conference through the Texas Municipal League. And, you know, I also, you know, valuing the benefit of Texas Municipal League training, I encourage our new City Council members to coordinate with the City Secretary on training, you know, as elected officials. So, and there are certain items that are required as elected officials. There's, you know, other items that may be optional. I'm certainly a big believer that training is valuable for the positions that you occupy. Certainly, you've got city staff and consultants here that can serve to advise you, but sometimes there is no substitute to the, you know, to the direct interaction, you know, beyond us with agencies such as TML. I guess let me circle back to the one thing that I went past as I conclude the report on my item, and that is the interviews regarding the city engineer. We received statements of qualifications, I believe, from seven firms. We interviewed five firms. I would like to say we had, I felt, a high level of competition between those firms. Ultimately, after a staff review committee and a large amount of internal discussion, my recommendation is that we continue to retain the services of Jones and Carter. I know I've stated to City Council that I believe there's been some issues between, you know, the relationship between Jones and Carter and City Council and staff. After a meeting with both staff and with Jones and Carter, I believe we forged a few pathways to improve those relationships and have a path forward to have both, I guess what I'd like to say will be a better relationship and operations from the engineer more along the lines of modernizing in the way that City Hall, that will work with City Hall. City Hall has changed in recent years, which has actually led to a decrease in some of the engineering expenses. The staff has picked some of those items up, both within Public Works, primarily with the Public Works Director and with the Director of Development, David Corcadell. And so we will be continuing to look for ways to, you know, optimize, you know, our value with the engineer as well as be able to perform additional tasks that are in-house. And with that, I'll conclude my portion of this and see if there's any questions related to my report or my recommendation.
Richard, we rebid engineer firms every year or every two years?
Well, there is not a firm city policy. That was one thing that I noted sometime after I had started here. And that was, and one of my directions from City Council was to go out essentially and advertise and review all the city's services. My recommendation would be to consider to do that on approximately an every-third-year basis. It's a lot of work. It takes a lot of effort. You know, I think doing it every three years strikes the balance between keeping up to date with the options that are out there, but also getting the value for having, you know, making your selection and having a relationship in place for several years. And so, and that's with regard to whether it be specific professional services such as engineering and attorney or something that is more of a bid for service like the operations activities.
Do you feel like with our existing issues that are known, you feel comfortable enough to still say, let's recommend them for another three years?
I do feel comfortable making that recommendation. And I'll also tell you that if I feel they don't live up to it, I will then feel comfortable coming back to City Council and explaining that, well, I made what I thought was my best recommendation at the time, that I'll have to go back on that.
Are you allowed to tell us who your second runner-up is?
I'm sorry, I didn't clearly hear you there.
I said, are you allowed to tell us who your second runner-up is?
Maybe that should go offline.
Yeah.
I was just curious, like, if we come back at this a year from now, could we start with our second runner-up versus having to redo this whole process again? That's where I was going with that.
Really, we're in the middle of a lot of big projects. And if we were to swap, say, in a year, hopefully we can work through some of the bumps that we have, but to start over. I mean, the learning curve for a new engineering firm is, it wouldn't be just like turn around and they would know everything within a month, or it would be 12 to 15 months. So, great communication and strong partnership and transparency is what we're asking for. And I think that, I think I have full confidence that Richard has stated what the city is needing and moving forward. And I think that I'm on board with his recommendation. How's that?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me also add that one of the items that we will be changing is to conduct quarterly meetings that include preferably two people from the elected body, the mayor and the council, and may rotate that around from period to period to be in on some of our performance meetings with them. Yeah, so we can have some, you know, additional participation from council. And I think that will go to help strengthen the relationship. And my goal would be to rotate council through that during the course of the year. I understand that all of you have individual schedules. Some of you may participate more than others. If that happens, I would certainly be happy to communicate with the council member and take your questions into those meetings. So, and as to the previous question, I would, you know, if we have to go back on that recommendation, I would work with the city attorney as to what the proper procedure would be based on the amount of time that's gone by. I don't anticipate that would be a problem, but obviously, it's, you know, if there's been a problem in the past, we will be cognizant of, we need to make sure we don't have a problem in the future. And, you know, and if it's, you know, if it's not better in the short term, you know, I'm not going to let it go to the long term.
So do you just need a motion to accept your report?
We'll go through all of them in totality. And counsel can, and ask questions as we go through each item. And then at the end, someone will make a motion to accept the departmental reports as presented.
Yep. And Mayor, for the ease of communication with us being online, if you don't mind, I can make a brief mention for each department. And then if there's a specific question, those department heads are available to provide additional information.
I think that's worked out well. Let's go in that format. So, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. With regard, starting with Public Works, some of the highlights with them is, I think many of you may have noticed, they've rebuilt the flower bed at the welcome sign out of Eva Street. And so that's much more bright and cheerful and welcoming out there. And primarily in the downtown area, they've mounted birthplace of the Texas flag signs throughout downtown on the back of stop signs. You'll notice them. Public Works participated in Light Up the Park and the parade events. They're one of those groups that, you know, you know, because they're primarily working the background, they don't necessarily get the high-profile notice. But, you know, we couldn't adequately conduct these events without the work of Public Works. You've got two months of reports in there. If there's anything you have specific questions on, you know, we do have Mike Muckleroy available. Otherwise, if there are no questions, I'll move on to the Police Department report. They have both monthly and annual information in there. I like the beginnings of their report. There's a good amount of information they have on there that includes the topics of training, including a cooperative event that occurred, I think it's really at the end of 2019, safety and education programs. We have flood and high-water rescue planning that they have in place. And I think many of you are familiar with the high-water rescue vehicles that the police department procured and have available here at City Hall should the emergency situation come up. You know, they also have, in the report, planning activities, and they have their annual reporting statistics in there. And so if there's any specific questions, Police Chief is available for those.
Hey, Richard, I'd like to make note on our agenda. Item number two is Public Works Report. It's not in our packet.
Okay.
It just goes from A to C. FYI.
Okay, I can, I'll work with, I'll get with the City Secretary. We can get that distributed. I'm not sure how that got, but.
No worries.
Thank you. Jumping to the Court Department. The report that we, the collections here increased in recent months. The court has, you know, after really the longest delay of resuming full activities in City Hall, the Court Department is back working as close to a full schedule as possible. They probably have one of the more difficult revisions in terms of dealing with COVID because the amount of people they bring in in a short period of time. As I complimented earlier, all of my department heads and really the full city staff, you know, I have seen Kimberly Duckett, you know, really put her mind to task trying to make this work. And so I definitely want to give credit where it's due. If you have some specific questions, you know, she is on the line for those. And jumping to the utility report, I think, you know, you've got two months' worth of utility report. I think these months are fairly straightforward. I will point out the escrow amount shows for the camera feasibility study, which is on the agenda tonight. And you can see, you can see a significantly declined number in the arrears now that we had corrected those relative to discussions that occurred in the previous year. And those are something that we are monitoring month to month. And so our staff is working to stay on top of. There's no questions on that. I can turn the floor over to Michael with the water report.
Mayor and counsel, I have our December operations report for you. Scroll down to page three, we have our district alerts. The majority of these alerts are due to power failures, with the exception of a leak that we found near City Hall, which was due to improperly used fire hydrant meter, which they were, we, Public Works had talked to them on how to properly operate that meter again. And then we had a pump failure on the 2nd of December. In addition to that, I would like to mention that, or feel imperative to mention, the chlorine issue we had towards the latter part of last month. We had found a bad solenoid valve at the water plant, which feeds the chlorine gas into the water. And in the time that it had, the well had turned off and the regular had not shut off, till the time we found it, the following day when we came to check the plant in, it had fed 140 pounds of chlorine, which, as some of y'all were aware, that it produced uncomfortable taste and smell. But we were able to isolate areas of the city and flush that water out. So there's no outstanding issues with the plant. It, but that piece of equipment has been replaced. On page four, we have your wastewater plant flow detail. Flow for the month of December was 5,234,000 gallons. Daily peak flow was November 29th at 427,000 gallons. And your daily average flow was 174,000 gallons, which was 44% of your permit. Page five is your discharge limitations and your effluent monitoring report. All samples were in compliance for the month of December, and we recorded a total of 9.75 inches of rain. Page six is the water report. We pumped a total of 8.858 million gallons, flushed 304,000, and sold a total of 7,991,000 gallons, bringing it to 94% accountability. And to the bottom right, you see the connections totaling 995. Page seven is your groundwater production chart with a 13-month history. Page eight is your water accountability chart with a 13-month history. And, sorry. And that is the end of the report. And let's, Mayor, counsel, if you'll have any questions?
I just have a question for Richard. Is there some kind of a city call-out where if something like the chlorine issue were to happen again, or we have other issues with water plants, or is there a way to notify the end user so that we don't have as many issues?
At the moment, our best way to do something like that would be to post an announcement through Facebook. In this particular case, you know, something like that for this case would have been problematic because it affected different parts of the city in different ways. So the appropriate action in one part of the city wasn't necessarily the same thing you'd want someone to do in a different part of the city. Yeah, how to be able to make that notification better is something we've been talking about. We haven't necessarily completely come up with a better idea of doing that, but we're looking into, we're looking into a couple of options, or at least trying to, so we can definitely be more responsive in the future. Yeah, this was, this was a very unusual item that occurred. I've seen it, I've seen it a couple of times before in my career. Probably, this is probably the third time in a 30-year career. So it's definitely something that is rare, but it doesn't mean we may not have something else in the future that might also need some sort of notification. So, you know, that point isn't lost on us.
I just heard a couple of complaints from restaurant owners because the city water feeds their soda machines. And so it caused significant issues in their restaurant business for that. So that's why I was asking.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. I know I talked to a couple of them about that as well. In those particular cases, I don't believe that was actually the chlorine that was the issue, but the city's response to the chlorine was to flush out the lines. And because of the high volume of flushing, I believe, what that is, it scoured off the mineral sediment that adheres to the interior walls of the water lines. And so that created a discoloration issue, but it put some sediment through to those. And I think that's really what caused those issues. But regardless, you know, it was an issue and there were, you know, end-user issues on those as well that we need to be responsive to.
And that's the end of the city reports?
We still have the financial report next. And then the engineer.
Sir Anthony?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just going through the summarization of the financial report. On page number three and four are your account balances. You have a total of about seven and a half months' reserve now in your general fund, little under 20 months' reserve in your MEDC fund, and that's primarily due to the loan that was taken care of back in December, and just under a year's reserve in your utility fund. Going through the cash flows, what I've done for those is I've combined November and December's into, just lumped in for each fund. The only thing that I did separate out in your report was the budgets. I did those separate November and separate December. For the month of November, sales tax, you had 416,557.44 collected. In December, you had 229,773.80. The only other, two other larger items, we have the offset of the 301,000 that was paid back in October for the home grants. That money came in along with the 29,805, which is the 10% retainage for three of the four home grants. Your tax revenue, you've received 146,697.65 and 285,312.69 for the month of December. And this, of course, being one of the bigger months that you'll receive added lower taxes. Along with next month, you'll see that number increase. And then by February, everything will start to go back down again. As far as your expenditures, the only one would be the 29,805 that was paid, that was the 10% retainage for the home grant to RM Quality Construction. Going through your budgets, you'll see some of the, on the general fund, some of them are a little bit over on the December side, like for personnel. And that's, and the reason that is, is because there were three pay periods in December compared to normally two. The next time that that will happen again will be in July. And then the only other things on here are there were a couple of items in the utility fund at the very end of your report, pages 58 and 62. The reason, for your dues and permits and licenses, I'm sorry. The reason, just pointing out that these are yearly TCEQ and Lone Star Groundwater Conservation District permits. Hence the reason why that is a little bit higher. And then for, and that is on account number 26326. And then on account number 26901, on page 62 of the report, the breakdown of that is mostly your quarterly generator preventive maintenance, which is about 5,500. And then list station pumps were added on list station 14 for around 15,000. And then list station pumps were added on list station 14 for around 15,000. Unless you have any questions, that's my summary of the report.
Hey Anthony, Kevin, just a quick question. When did you need us to come by? Or do you need us to come by and sign anything as far as that checking account goes?
Whenever the cards come in, I typically, I think they're given to Susan and then she'll, she'll contact you to come in and sign.
Okay, thank you, sir. Great job.
You're welcome. Thank you, appreciate it.
16,000, isn't that, is that our largest taxed month ever?
I'm sorry, repeat that question again?
416,557 dollars for taxes and, and that we collected November. Is that our largest to date?
That's the largest I've seen.
That's what I thought.
That I've ever seen collected.
Yep. That's good.
Yeah.
That was everybody's stimulus money.
It helps that was a quarterly month, but it was definitely a, a large collection for us.
Yes, it's beautiful. All right, next up, the engineer's report. Is Ms. Vu on? Are you going to push me or Chris?
I am here in Catherine's here.
Well, hello, hello. Oh, hi, Chris. I didn't see you. Sorry.
All right. First of all, I want to thank you. We look forward to continuing to work with you and continuing to grow our relationship and get things accomplished for the city. So we'll get going in our report. First item on there is the Baja Road Projects. Still working with the state on that item. We actually have a call set up with Grant Works later this week, or first part of next week, to discuss getting the final payout on those two projects. The downtown water line replacement project is underway. They started installing the pipe today in front of Cedar Break Park, and that will continue. This is a reminder, that project goes all the way from Cedar Break Park down 105 up Pond Street and all the way to in front of Jims. And so that's replacing the existing six and eight-inch water lines with 12-inch water line that's drastically improved pressures and flows, especially to the west side of the city. Water plant number three improvements, those contracts are still underway. With it being Water Development Board, things take a little bit longer. But the contractor is also working on his submittals while that's going on. So as soon as things are ready, he will be close to ready as well. On the GLO projects, that one, we have a, again, we'll call with Grant Works to go through environmental clearances this coming week. So that can continue to progress for those three projects included in the GLO. List station one improvements, we had a meeting with the contractor earlier this month with staff to discuss the damages that we've talked about previously. We each had some homework to do. And I think we, as of late last week, early this week, everyone has gotten the requested information. So we're scheduling a follow-up meeting with them to get that project closed out. On to page two, under the existing and upcoming developments, we had the camera feasibility study, which we'll talk about the last item of this report, or excuse me, last item of today's agenda. Under plan reviews, a couple of updates since this went out. We did return comments to Town Creek Crossing last week, and we received them back earlier this afternoon. Our goal is that we'll get those reviews complete and present that to planning and zoning next week, and then followed by council the week after. So they will have approvals to get going on construction of their project. The Moon of Montgomery, we approved that minor plat today. So that was signed, so it's in the process of being reported. And their construction plans are coming along. And I would expect they'll be ready for approval here at the next submittal. We've been going back and forth just some clarification. Under ongoing construction, you have Hills of Town Creek, section four, which the majority of the underground utilities have been completed, and they're beginning to work on paving. So so far, so good, no issues have come up. Under the one-year warranty inspections, we did have the one-year warranty for the Atkins Creek Water and Sewer Line Project today. We had that this morning. There's a hand, small items that the contractor is going to address, but overall, it was holding up in good shape. The other warranty inspections that are outstanding, both Hills of Town Creek and Emma's Way, there were items to do with the paving that were part of both of those that came up in the warranty. And so the contractor that's working on Hills of Town Creek, section four, is going to be addressing those items as he gets to the paving part of his project. So hopefully here in the next month or so, Hills of Town Creek, section four, section three, and Emma's Way will all have all their items completed by the same contract. Last page, the Town Creek Crossing, or Town Creek, just the inspection of it. Tech Dot installed the rip wrap today in the bottom of the creek, right there at 149 with the propane tanks. They sent me a follow-up, asked me to go take a look and see if I had anything to change. So I'll be looking at that this week and get back with them if there's any final adjustments that are needed. Another thing is the, we had a recent new flurium activity of the Tech Dot Atkins Creek Repair Project. You know, a couple of months ago, we reported that according to Tech Dot, there is no funding until 2026, I believe. They've recently started reaching back out and they're wanting to move forward sooner. So I don't know exactly what sooner means, but there's been a renewed interest on Tech Dot's front. So we'll have more information coming on that one as, as we.
Chris, is that because they're widening 1097? Maybe?
I don't, I don't know. That's it, or the, the fit, the repair that they made has started to kind of fail a little bit. It's still, it's still holding up, you know, it's, but it's, it's definitely not the way it was when they completed it. So I, I think it's a combination of the two. I exchanged some emails with Tech Dot earlier today, just trying to get clarification because he said, oh, well, you know, where do y'all stand on the right-of-way acquisitions? Well, according to, y'all told us to stop because you didn't have funding anyway, so you wouldn't work on it. So he's regrouping, and I expect to have a call with them here in the next week or so to get that. And that is all I have until we get to the feasibility study.
Chris, let's see here on what the FM 149 and SH 105, right turn lane. So does that advise that the project is scheduled to be let in 2021? So I mean, that's starting now?
That means that they would bid, I think according to them, their bid schedule was July, August to bid the project and then move forward with construction after that. So I, I think it would probably be, you know, a middle of the fall, late fall, by the time they get through the contracts and everything on their side, and then get the project actually constructed. But we'll, we'll continue to follow up and as they nail on that deadline, we'll, we'll pass it on.
Okay.
Mayor, if you might have one thing to add before the reports are finalized. And going back and looking at it, I can, I can see the public works report, it's in the, in the package of paperwork. However, the tab did not get created. So it is, it's kind of hiding between the, the backend of the city administrator's report and the front of the police report. So I just did want to point that out for the record. But it is difficult to find. So so that's all, all we have for the city reports.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the city reports as presented.
Second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the departmental reports as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the departmental reports as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the departmental reports as presented. Item number three on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance at the City Council of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing participation with other Entergy service area cities in matters concerning energy, Texas Inc. at the Public Utility Commission of Texas in 2021, authorizing the hiring of lawyers and rate experts, authorizing the city's participation to the full extent permitted by the law at the Public Utility Commission of Texas, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act and declaring an effective date.
Adopt service ordinance would be required for the Lawton Law Firm to represent the city of Montgomery with other participating cities before the PUC. Participation with this coalition of cities does not directly cost the city money. Attorney fees are ultimately paid by Entergy. The Lawton Law Firm has represented the city several years in the past in this annual matter, along with approximately 40 other city clients in this coalition. Both the city attorney, you know, could answer questions on this. I would like to point out that Ms. Brittany Chandler with Entergy is also here. And, you know, it could speak to this matter.
Yes, thank you for having us. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, this is, this is a program that we're working on right now. We only have one pilot out there. It is for a natural gas generator. Brian Garcia from Entergy is also on the phone. But it, it's really for, it, any customer that has natural gas nearby, that is a non-residential customer, could come to us and we could do a study if this goes through and look at getting them backup generation. So what that would look like is upfront, Entergy would share the cost of what that total cost of installing that natural gas generator. The benefit to the customer will be that they won't pay the full cost of the generator upfront. It will actually be spread out over up to 20-year period. The, they will also have the backup generator when needed. And then when they are not using that generator, the benefit to Entergy and the consumers as well is that we are able to flip a switch and turn it on and actually bring generation back onto the system. So we're asking for an approval to deny tonight so that we can, we can send it up to the commission and get it reviewed.
Sounds like an oxymoron, approval to deny.
It does, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions about it. You know, we're really excited about it. Like I said, we've got one pilot right now and it's been going really well.
Basically, they ask for denial because every city has original jurisdiction. And so instead of having to get decisions through the administrative process through multiple cities, they, they ask it all to be denied and it goes to the PUC where they can make their case at one location.
Yep. How's the pilot going? How many people are participating?
So far, so good. We have one customer, it was an HEB store. So it, you know, for us, that's, that's a great example of, of, you know, somebody that if we did have a major event or storm, we could flip the switch, turn them on with the generator that, you know, and then on, on another day, that's a lot of usage. It's a large generator that we can actually feed it back into the system. So, so far, so well, you know, we're looking forward to it. We've had a lot of interest in the program so far. And, you know, Brian, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but, you know, we're excited about it. This is something, you know, that we've been looking for ways to partner with our customers and bring them new products and services, and, and we think this is going to be a good one.
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Brittany was saying, I was part of the team that launched the pilot. And there have been multiple instances where the generator has been deployed and has put to the system. And every time it does that, that's a benefit for all customers, residential, commercial, or otherwise. But there have also been, there was a storm we had a little while back, y'all might have heard of it. But when there were some issues with, with, you know, providing power, HEB was on. HEB didn't go off because of that generator. And it's got a seven-second switchover, so they were able to, you know, they, they didn't lose any of their, you know, the perishables and things like that. So it's, it's definitely something that has worked out really well, the mechanics of it, the, the actual technical specs of it have gone very well. And HEB's been really happy with it. So we're excited to bring it to more folks.
And I'll just, I'll just add one more thing. You know, the, the proposal is so that we can actually put up to 75 megawatts back onto the grid. And, and, you know, one megawatt is about 200 homes. So just kind of thinking about what kind of load that that could potentially be for our customers in times of need, it's, it's, you know, it could be really good for everybody. Does anybody have any questions? Thank y'all for having us tonight.
Thank you for coming.
I'll make a motion that we accept this item as presented.
I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept this item as presented. That motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the item as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number three as presented. Item number four on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding acceptance of utility and economic feasibility study for Dev Point LLC on the 389 acre Camera Track Development Number 2006.
Okay, City Council authorized this study on December 8th, 2020. The engineer will present the study at the meeting. I believe we also have a representative for the developer and/or engineer to speak a bit on the development. I'd like to point out that acceptance of this study does not bind the seat to any future action, nor does it indicate the desire of City Council to support the project. Acceptance of a study means that City Council believes the information is accurate in the report and the engineers perform the task City Council authorized them to do. And with, with that, I can turn the floor over for the development representative.
Good evening, this is Justin Hood. Did everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hey, just want to thank you guys for having us. Ms. Mayor and City Council members, I really appreciate you having us here. And I'll, I'll keep it brief, just want to give you a little background on our company and, you know, let you, let you know where, where we're coming from and who, who we are and why we want to develop in, in Montgomery and be a part of the city. My name, like Richard said, Justin Hood. I'm a partner in Grace Point Homes, along with Tom Cox Jr. And we have a development entity that we, we call Dev Point. So Grace Point has been building in Montgomery County since 2007. We developed several neighborhoods in Montgomery County. Our largest development is Stillwater, which is near the Jones State Forest. Actually, abuts the Jones State Forest at FM 1488 and I-45. And then closer to Montgomery, we're actively building in Magnolia Reserve, which is on FM 149, just north of, of FM 1488. And we have model homes open in both communities. So Tom is native to Montgomery County, went to McCullough High School. That's how old he is. And I lived here for about 26 years, raised three kids that went through Montgomery schools. Fortunately and unfortunately, they've all graduated, but now I'm paying for college for all of them. So my three sons. So our first initial, you know, venture in the area, we're looking for, for land we could develop to kind of play on what we, what we had seen as being successful and attractive to, to homeowners in Stillwater. And that was having, you know, water features as amenities and then also offering little larger home sites. So, and that kind of continued into Magnolia Reserve, our project on, on 149, which is actually very, you know, in this industry, it's very, considered very large lots, half-acre lots. So that's our goal with the Camera Track, which we're calling it Redbird Ranch right now, which kind of plays off the name that the family uses, Redbird Meadows Ranch, I believe. So, you know, we're just have that for our, our files and everything right now. But we'll, we'll have to, to finalize that one day. But, you know, our, our goal is to keep that community, keep the country feel of the community, offering the, the larger lots. Some of them will be half-acre, in excess of half-acre. But most will be either 85 by 170 feet deep or 110 by 200 feet deep. So, you know, typically, what we're, we're seeing in other markets is, it's a lot smarter lot. And then really, you know, we want to offer that larger lot, but then also offer the convenience of having, having the utilities, having, you know, central, central water and sewer and everything and not having to rely on, on aerobic systems. So that's why, that's why we're coming to you. And we've, we've discussed the mud facilities too, you know, creating a mud in the city to, to service those and also maintain, maintain the ponds and the detention and keep, keep the appearance up to par. So. So, uh, you know, that's, like I said, we're, we're trying to focus on the amenities being natural. And, uh, you know, hopefully we'll be able to maintain the, the, and improve the lakes in the, in the community and, uh, and have fishing and, and put in some docks and, and everything as, as our main features, keep it, keep it in natural state. But, uh, I'll turn it over to engineers if now's the time. If you guys have any questions for me.
I have a question. So looking at the price point of these homes and then the proximity of the railroad. I know that I understand, I talked about, I, I brought this up when we had the, the previous meeting at City Hall, but I know there's going to be some green space, but do you, last thing we wanted is somebody to be sitting on properties. We want to make sure that we get those tax, out of the wrong taxes and people in there. So does that, do you find that to be a problem or concern?
No, actually, the Magnolia Reserve project, which I encourage you to, if you get down, down that way to, to drive through and look at it. You actually have to, uh, you know, right adjacent to the neighborhood, you know, cross over the railroad tracks to get to the main entrance. And it, it only has one entrance in it, which, you know, we're talking about having several points of entry to the community eventually. But, uh, you know, it, it hasn't, you know, it hasn't slowed down sales at all. It's, it seems like everyone wants off of their postage stamped lot and they want to be, you know, out in the country, especially with everything that's going on right now, we're, we're seeing demand in, in, uh, in other communities and even further out of, you know, talking to builders I know that are building in New Waverly and the Texas Green Ranch Development and some of the other developments out there. It's just, it's, it's amazing that the demand.
Hey, well then we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, there's a lot kind of going on with this feasibility report. There's kind of a, you know, this development is from a size perspective and a location perspective is different than the city has seen. So please stop me if you have questions. I'm going to kind of go through it, kind of utility by utility, uh, and then get to the traffic and transportation. And so just, I'll stop along the way to kind of wrap up water and then we'll move on. Cause again, there's, there's a good amount going on with this development that I want to make sure we all understand. So, you know, the, the, the basics of it, you know, there's the map shows where it is. We're talking Womack Cemetery, Old Plantersville, Dobbin Plantersville. The land plan is, is still kind of in the beginning stages, but it's going to be somewhere in that 485 to 515 or so homes on third to half acre home sites for those. And again, this is just based on the early, early planning of it. They have a build out period of approximately six years as well. They're projecting, uh, they have a handful of builders that they've been talking to, to, that want to be putting down lots or in homes simultaneously. So, uh, they expect a relatively quick build out and about an average home price of around $500,000. So, you know, significant homes and significant value created to the city and I'll get to that shortly in the report. So, you know, one thing that, you know, the water is one of the biggest issues with, you know, the, this tract. And it's not necessarily the demand they generate, uh, but it's the location of the, the tract in comparison to the rest of the city facilities and water plants, et cetera. So starting on page two of the report, it goes into the water aspects of this project. So our number one is, it's currently located in the Dobbin Plantersville Water Supply Corporation. Uh, and that's something that we've been talking with Grace Point and their engineers for, since we started back in October. And they're have already at least started looking into and working through that process of how to decertify themselves from their boundary to be able to receive service from the city of Montgomery. So definitely a, a high priority item, but it's something that based on the conversations and the information they have so far, it looks like that's going to be as successful to, to get out of that. When you then get into the actual capacities of your facilities and serving them, you know, there's a handful of things at play. So again, we have the, with the current project you have going on, you, you drastically increase the number of connections you're allowed to have up from 875 to about 2,500 based on TCQ rules. So when you plug their development into everything else you have going on, you have enough connection count to provide them what they need. The other part of it is the capacity, what you can pump out. What we have on our report is based on, you know, the limiting factors, your booster pumps. And that's when your booster pumps are only running, you know, six hours a day to account for that peak. So even though it says 568,000 gallons per day, there's still a lot more capacity that's truly on the ground. Just based on the numbers, that's what it comes down to. And when you just look at average daily flows, using the TCQ rules, you still have until the 2023, 2024 timeline. That's assuming everything else in the city is building out. So Town Creek Crossing, Waterstone, this development, Hills of Town Creek and all the commercial that's already existing is all continuing to build out. Our projection is in that 2024 timeline that we need to look at more booster pump or pumping capacity in general. And by that time, you know, kind of the dis, the discussion about the water plant improvements was around that time, we're also going to be getting close to that connection count that we're, we're having, you know, well into the discussion of not have decisions and starting with the design and planning of the, of a future water plant site over on the west side of town. And so that decision of where the booster pumps go in other improvements, is it, you know, water plant two or water plant three or this future site will be more clear by that time and gives us the flexibility to put those pumps where we need, based on where we're seeing the growth, uh, to get the biggest benefit out of it. So when you look at where you are today, um, that's in here. So 355,000 gallons a day is what your average daily flow is for the past 12 months. That's steadily increasing over time. If you take everything that you have committed today, so all, again, all the developments that are already ongoing, you're at about 700,000 gallons a day at full build out. Again, that's, you know, over time, because you got to remember all the water stone lots and things like that, that, you know, there's a lot there to be developed that they're slow movers. So this is just saying, everything that we have today is built out. Where do we think we'll be without adding anything? This tract is approximately 155,000 gallons a day. You know, by adding this on, you're about 150% of that 568 capacity. But remember, the only difference here is, is we're talking booster pumps. So adding pumping capacity or some type of water plant or improved water plants closer to this tract is what's going to give us the most benefit to serve this area of town. And it's, it's all just based on location. Because, you know, you think when our main water plant is on 1097 by Pleasant Morgan, that water is mostly getting produced out of there and has to cross all the way across town to get to here. That's, that's kind of the biggest, and I can't even say issue, but the hurdle of this, this property. So what we did, you know, there was a little bit extra on this, you know, study is we did plug this into your water model. So we updated the water model that was built a few years ago to show average, are the conditions today. We plugged in this development and we also plugged in that full developed condition of all your other existing development to see how it's going to react and what kind of problems the model would predict to have. And what we found was there are some improvements that are needed to be able to meet the max day, peak day flows for this property. You know, average daily flows can be covered, fire flows can be covered. But there's a, a system of improvements, you know, that need to be done in order to provide that two and a half times your normal flow peak, you know, middle of the summer, hot, hot day, that, that this is causing an issue. So, you know, there is work to be done, but again, we're, this is at full build out of this development and all the other developments that we really start seeing those issues of the peak day. Other things we noticed, so, you know, one thing that we were trying to do is there's an existing water line off of Old Plantersville to there today and trying to serve the initial phase of this development on to help, you know, just kind of spread out some of the costs to get the development going. When we plugged it into the model, we realized that that would not work. Uh, that line is, is a very long dead end line. And it just did not have the capacity to be able to provide sufficient flow and pressure without go ahead and looping all the way back down Old Plantersville and Old Dobbin Plantersville up to 105. So recommendation is that that is done in the first phase of their development. And talking with them, they've actually kind of switched the location of their first phase. So there are some ways to work around it to get there. So I think we're going the right direction. On page three, uh, we're going back to the, the, the start talks about your 2025 flow. Again, this is talking about the handful of improvements that are needed. I think we came up with, you know, 17 different options of projects to, to put together. And each one of those, you can take all 17 and do one with two or one with four and, you know, infinite ways to look at it. What our shortlist that we came down to are things that are either underway or relatively low hanging fruit. Were these three items that, that could be done to make sure that we meet, able to meet that 2025 demand as it is. And those are the East Lone Star Parkway Waterline Loop, uh, which is being constructed as part of the Town Creek Crossing Development. So the first phase of that's going in and the, the next phase will take it further. So that's already underway. A short water line loop on Pleasant Morgan at Lone Star Parkway, uh, that we've talked in the past with staff. And that's something that potentially public works can do in-house. And then another short water line extension coming out of the back of water plant three, two Pleasant Morgan. Just to, again, our whole goal here is try to get larger lines with a shorter distance through this development. And then again, back to, I've already talked about with the max day flow, looking at that water plant number four over by Hills of Town Creek or a overhaul water plant two. Again, there's a lot of different ways and options to look at it. We did do a very, very brief model of plugging in a water plant and water well or a water well and an elevated storage tank over on, at that future site. And when we did that, uh, the system did work. Uh, there weren't the pressure issues. There weren't the flow issues that we saw with the rest of it. And that was if you just did the water plant, uh, without the rest of the utility extension. So, uh, essentially what we're trying to say is city has options. So there's, there's options out there. All the items that we looked at are on your, uh, long-term plan, your master plan for your water system. You know, this development doesn't necessarily change the plan. It just changes the timeline, the implementation of that. So, you know, we all knew that this is a development driven plan and it's development like this that changes and makes the need for those a little bit sooner than thought. But again, it's, it's just, you know, a, uh, kind of what's needed to serve this development. Any questions on the water side of this development or what the city would have to do to be able to supply water to this property? Okay, good. On sanitary side, it, it's not as complicated. Uh, it's relatively simpler. So from the sanitary perspective, they're, are going to provide lift stations on their site. Those lift stations will then pump off their site into the existing collection system of the city. We evaluated two alternatives. Uh, one was going up Old Dobbin Plantersville by the high school in discharging. And then the other one was going down Old Plantersville and discharging onto Rankin Road. Our recommendation is the Rankin Road option. Uh, the reason for that is that where they would discharge in Old Dobbin Plantersville, it would go into lift station number five, uh, which would put it over its capacity. So they would, there would be requirements to upgrade that lift station as well as kind of multiple pumpings to get it all the way to the plant that going the other route would, would save. As far as capacity goes, you know, it's the same story that we've been talking about, you know, for the past few years is, right now, we're, we're still well below, you know, 50% of our capacity. I think the, this month is at 44% of your capacity at the plants being used. But again, just like the water side, as everything continues to build out, uh, you, you start using up that capacity. So based on everything that's going today, you're at about 434,000 gallons a day. With this development, you're about 538,000 gallons a day. So again, you know, the need, like we've been talking about, to kind of take those, those water and sewer plans, get them brushed off, back up to date, um, and start moving forward on these paths to get the additional capacity in there. Still goes and the timeline and the third or fourth paragraph, um, has changed a little bit. So obviously this development is a significant driver. So the, we expect to hit that 75% rule at about 2023 and your 90% rule in 2024. So again, except, you know, aggressive growth of all developments that are going on at the same time. But those are the projections that we have and that backup is, is later in the report. Couple of other things to note on the, the lift stations that they would put on their site is one of the requirements of the city would be that they locate or that we work with them to locate. But as far as the depth and final sizing of those utilities that they're set up to allow the city to extend in the future, uh, to be able to provide service both to Womack Cemetery and Old Plantersville, as well as on the north side of Old Dobbin Plantersville, uh, to be able to provide service to those. That the, the final design and sizing of those will all be dependent on where the, their land plan will be able to locate those lift stations. And that will be worked out through the design process. And the goal there is just to, to minimize the number of lift stations that the city has. So we're not, again, pumping, 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 uh, if not necessary. So the next one is drainage. Uh, one really good thing in regards to drainage about this, you know, development is it is in the Lake Creek watershed versus Town Creek, uh, so or Stewart Creek. So the, you know, existing problems and things that the city has with drainage on the north side and through the middle of town. This development doesn't affect it as it all flows south in the Lake Creek and around. So, um, they would still have to go through the same process, do a drainage study, come up with engineer plans and approvals to meet the requirement. However, uh, it's not a, as, as big of a deal for my existing standpoint today, since it isn't part of the, uh, the Town Creek watershed. Traffic and transportation is probably the other, the second biggest item on here. We'll, we'll go through the thoroughfare plan here in a second. I'll refer you to those maps. This is a large development. So we're looking at about 4,700 trips per day when we plug it into our kind of trip generation model based on statistics. That would all come out on the three entrances and exits that they currently have planned. Two on the Old Plantersville and one on the Spring Branch Road. Ultimately, uh, the Spring Branch Road would be a, a additional phase in the development. But, you know, that's where they would come. And, you know, obviously there's, that's a lot of traffic and we all know the condition of Old Plantersville road today. That is currently a county road. So one of our next steps, uh, that we talked about with the developer last week is getting a meeting set up with the county commissioner to start talking through some of these items in concept, as well as the improvements of these roads that are currently county roads, as well as the changes to the thoroughfare plan that we have proposed later on in the report. So if you will all skip to, because it'll be easier to talk from, let me see, it is page, sorry. 204 of your packet. So what you're looking at on this page is your existing thoroughfare plan as it is today. So this is what was put together when you did the joint venture with precinct one and precinct two, uh, to do the thoroughfare plan. And this was based off of the county's plan and then tweaked to better fit the city. So this is what you have today. So you'll see the tract is in a red boundary. The southern loop alone star parkway cuts right through the middle of the property. And then there's a second road that heads north up and connects with this loop at the same time. So you have two relatively major roads, one, one major road and one minor road that goes through the middle of this property that wasn't a, uh, ideal from a single family development standpoint. So if you go forward to pages, on page 206 of your packet, uh, you'll see a proposed change slash adjustment of the thoroughfare plan. Remember those thoroughfares, oh, it's to give you the general location. You know, it could be a quarter mile each way easily that those things move. And so what we tried to do in, in this exhibit is find a way to still get the road network in to meet the needs of the city and the projected future needs of the city in the, in the area, uh, as well as working with and through the development to hit that goal. So, uh, what we're proposing is that the South Loop Alone Star Parkway continues south past this property that would essentially replace that red on the previous sheet, the red north-south road. That would become it and continue down south. That would become it and continue down south and back over to one forty-nine. And then the, the east-west part of the loop would be kind of split. So we would take one and move it to the north side of the property along the existing Old Plantersville Road. And then the second one, there was an existing road south of this property is moving that north to compensate for that spacing between them for additional connection between Spring Branch Road and one forty-nine. The one thing that you'll see is kind of at the top corner by the egg barn in the high school, the realignment of Old Planters, Old Dobbin Plantersville at Old Plantersville. That it becomes the through street is now Old Plantersville Road to go from Spring Branch all the way back into the city. And Old Dobbin Plantersville will tee into that intersection and create an intersection at that point versus it being the third street. This would then allow, you know, easier traffic flow from east to west, which is what that South Loop of the Parkway was doing in this location. Additionally, since kind of this, this has started, the developer has relooked at a his land plan. And there's a potential that they would relocate their entrance to line up with this road. Old Dobbin Plantersville Road. So that would be the main in and out for the development, which would be then a straight shot back to one oh five or to Old Plantersville or excuse me, Spring Branch or back into the city. So what would be required, you know, kind of going forward of them is they, they would be required to dedicate right away along here to be able to construct these roads in the future. And then the meeting with the county to determine again, since it's not a city road as of today, what type of improvements are going to be needed and how are those brews going to get completed? Either is it by the county? Is it a joint effort between county and developer? And who ultimately will take over the ownership of those roads if they're turned over to the city? That's to be determined and that's going to take the coordination with Montgomery County to do so. You also may know that Montgomery County is currently going through their thoroughfare plan update, which they're trying to wrap up for approval this summer. So it's taking, you know, this plan and any other changes that the city has and sitting down with them to make sure that you know, the cities kind of wants and needs and projections are included in their plan as well. Because they, they do co-align and we want them to make sure that we're, we're talking the same on their plan. One more road to to point out on this is if you were Womack Cemetery is today, it's labeled a thoroughfare on this map. It's the pink line all the way from one oh five and then it continues down south off the page, potentially halfway between Spring Branch Road and one forty-nine. That is a proposed thoroughfare. So that's a hundred foot wide, hundred foot wide right away. That would ultimately be a four lane divided highway potentially. That is on the county thoroughfare plan as well. The thought here is, you know, this is well in the future of of something, you know, obviously we have to get to the railroad track over the railroad track and continue south. But you know, there's a potential that in the future that could be an elevated crossing just depending on railroad rules at the time, safety of the intersection. There's, there's a lot of things that can happen between now and the time that this road gets constructed, but there is a possibility of that, just because the railroad doesn't prefer to have multiple at grade crossings of the railroad track, especially in a short distance. You don't have any questions on the traffic paving transportation section kind of of this? Because there's a lot of changes that still achieve the city's goals, but the definitely different from the kind of plan that that we've thought about, at least from a conceptual level.
No, Chris, I was just going to ask you, again, at what point are we talking about things really getting, getting started or you know, getting final plans finalized and getting started with all of this?
So that's really, you know, in, in Justin or Ryan, you might be able to answer this better, but my understanding their timeline is the soonest is that, that, you know, the first lots would be the first part of twenty twenty-two. Kind of if everything moves very quickly, that would take, you know, obviously there's a lot of steps between now and then, things aligning. And Justin, is that accurate?
That's, that's pretty aggressive.
Okay.
So yeah, probably mid to late twenty twenty-two is what I would say.
And then over the next six years, six years or so after that continuing, right?
I think with the, with the development, you could include that in the timelines, starting, starting then. So.
Right. And as far as, you know, the roads go, Kevin, you know, it's, you know, a lot of these roads today, it's about, you know, the right away acquisition, the things that would likely get constructed, you know, sooner rather than later is the kind of realignment of the Old Dobbin Plantersville, Old Plantersville intersection as well as, you know, any immediate improvements to Old Plantersville Road as it heads kind of adjacent to this property. Because again, we all know the condition and the previous issues with that road. So really talking through those and looking at the impact of this development on these roads and you know, is it additional stop signs to help with the, the traffic that's along there or you know, just improving and widening. So it's, you know, not as tight. So you know, the accident is less prone, as a safer road to travel on. There's a, a lot to be worked out and with it being a county road currently, there's a lot of coordination that has to be done in order to get to that final solution of what that looks like.
Regardless, I think it's going to be an exciting thing for, for our area. That's for sure.
It is.
Thanks.
Developer be required to have.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. Well, the developer will be required to right of way for both Womack Cemetery as well as Old Plantersville or just one or the other. What is the right of way requirements for all four sides?
It'll be a portion of. So on, on Old Plantersville, there's already an existing right of way there. So they'll just be required to give the small amount to get it to a total of seventy feet, which is what's needed. And that right of way, again, the documentation is not very good on it, but it's probably six fifty or sixty feet as it is today. So we're looking ten to twenty feet kind of strip along Old Plantersville that they would need to give. The same thing is going to go for Womack. So we need an ultimate of a hundred feet. If it's fifty feet today, then we'll get additional twenty, twenty-five feet on their side of the property. And then future development will drive, you know, an additional right of way. We're not going to, you know, require that one property undertake the whole burden, especially when we're going on the alignment of existing road. And then two, it's the same thing with the to the west of the property and the south of the property, we're looking for half of it. So again, future development can give that other half again. We're not trying to put a hundred percent of the burden on one developer or one property owner for that matter.
And I just would like to say that I'm sure most of you know that I had a million questions on this. So thank you for taking almost an hour with me before the meeting to answer most of my questions. So this property is fully adjacent to my personal property. So I attached land to this property. Literally could cross the street and touch it. So I am watching it closely. But I am excited for the growth too. I do believe that once this property takes off, that the subsequent thousand plus acres behind this, along Spring Branch will also begin to take off and it'll just be huge growth for the city. So this one's going to set the path, I think, for the rest.
Julie, I agree with you. And also something important to bring up that we had talked about in our previous meeting, Chris, when we, when last week, when we talked about this. Is part of this is in our ETJ. And so we, we'll have to go in and annex it. But what that means is if we annex, if we, if four hundred acres is in our ETJ and we annex it, then we get four hundred acres pushed out past the annexation boundaries. So, correct?
Right. So it'll be a half mile from that point. And on this side of the city, there's not a competing ETJ. You know, other sides we have on the north side and on the east side, we have Conroe. But on this side, annexation would be bumped out a half acre or excuse me, a half mile from the city limit.
Just important to note. Thank you.
Correct. So kind of final section on here and then please continue to ask me questions. Kind of going into the costs and the financials of it. They are subject, they would be subject to impact fees. If you look on page one eighty-eight of your report, page eight of the study or one eighty of the packet, page eight of the report, we'll see a total summary of cost. Water and sewer impact fees totaling, you know, almost one point eight million dollars or so. Escrow account, which that's just a placeholder, because again, with, you know, this many lots over multiple phases that'll have to be, you know, worked out over time for the plan interviews, inspection, etc. This is just assuming that, you know, inspecting three times a week for six months straight to four hours a day to get this done. The water line loop and off-site force main costs are shown on here. That's for them to complete the whole loop. Some of their preliminary plans, they plan to include the loop within their development. So they'll be able to dual use that line to both serve their customers and close the loop. So that will help with the overall cost. And the off-site force main is running it again from their development all the way up Old Plantersville, crossing the railroad track, which is a pretty good sized chunk of change just to get the railroad approval and crossings and then up to Rankin Road. And one of the questions that Julie and I talked about is, you know, the impact this at Rankin Road and it would be an underground connection. So after once construction's complete, it would be, you wouldn't see it driving by. The other part of it is obviously is the value that this regenerate. So if, you know, they had a provided an average sales price of around five hundred thousand dollars a home, you're looking at possibly a two hundred fifty-eight million dollar, two hundred fifty-nine million dollar development at full build out that, you know, you use your current tax rate, you're looking at almost a million dollars a year and taxable value or excuse me, tax revenue to the city based on this, this feasibility. So obviously it's a huge, huge tax base for the city of Montgomery County size.
That's, that's a game changer.
It is. And Justin mentioned it earlier, you know, the, the concept of a utility district or a similar entity in this development. Now, it is traditional, especially with the development of this size to have, you know, a four hundred or so acre utility district is much more normal than some of the smaller ones that we currently have in the city. But that's still to be worked out and discussed and go through development agreement with the city to get all that approved. But that is on the books. And as Johnson mentioned, the function of that would not only be from a financing mechanism, but also from a operations and maintenance of the recreation facilities and the ponds and things like that to maintain those, because that wouldn't be something that the city would ultimately take over. And that is, is kind of the summary of everything I have. I know there's a lot in the report and a lot going on with this development. It definitely took me longer to get to this one than a lot of the previous ones, but does anyone have any questions on kind of any of the, the aspects of development or how the city serves it or concerns?
Chris, do you know on that mobility plan that we looked at earlier on the inside of that J hook that you showed me, would that half mile extension of the ETJ basically fully encompass that Spring Branch mobility plan that you sent me? Would it put all of that inside the ETJ then?
It would. So, you know, for comparison sake, just everyone has it in front of them. If you look at the boundary map or the development. So from their western boundary closest to Spring Branch to Spring Branch Road, that's about a quarter mile. So double that distance from that line for your ETJ and then same thing on the south going around. So it wouldn't do the full J of the J hook of the city, but it would, you know, significantly eat into that, that section. And but what, just, just so we're clear, that what that doesn't change is it doesn't change the Dobbin Plantersville CCN for any of those other areas, which is still covered. And if you look at page one ninety-one of your report packet, the hatched area with the cross hatch on it is what's in the Dobbin Plantersville CCN. So this, if they're successful and decertifying the track from their boundary, it would only affect their boundary, not anything around them.
And Justin, do you know, have you reached out to Mid-South to, I mean, like, what does a timeline look like for Mid-South to be able to provide electric? Because this is not on the intrage grid. Like, are they ready and able to handle that amount of load?
For the ride on that. With elevation.
You were muted there. I didn't hear all that.
Oh, I said, I was going to defer to Ryan on that. He was, he was talking with Mid-South, I believe.
Yeah, I have not talked to them directly about serving this. It usually comes a little bit later on in the project, but I've got other projects going on with them and I have not seen them back down from any project yet. So that will be forthcoming.
I, I know that that area is on the very next stage of fiber. So I'm very excited that fiber will be there before the homes come because we've waited on high speed on this side of the railroad tracks for as long as I can remember. So this will be fun times.
All right. Well, again, you know, so the, the goal tonight was to, one, introduce, you know, Grace Point and kind of talk through the development, go through some of the, the issues and potential solutions and things that to consider as it goes forward. And, you know, there's still obviously a lot of work to be done, a lot of decisions and development agreements and things like that to have this go forward. But if you think of any questions, feel free, feel free to ask. So.
For what it's worth, I did some homework about Grace Point, around Grace Point, and they've got a great reputation and, and well received. I'm highly recommended.
I make a motion that we accept the engineer's report as presented.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the engineer's report as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the department, the engineering report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the engineering report as presented. Next item of business on your agenda is the executive session, which we do not have one this evening. The following item would also be counsel inquiry. I would like to note that we did get started at six oh one. We were hoping that Tom Cronin, Councilman Cronin could join us and he has not made the meeting. So Ms. Hensley, if you would just make note.
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah, I had asked Richard about this. So just as a, to look into for next time, but I believe we talked about Mac possibly the, one of the advantages of bringing Judge Mack in, which we decided not to was for juvenile court. Rosen Quest told me that the only thing that we would need for the city would be a juvenile court clerk. And so I didn't know if that might be worth looking into cost wise of what that looked like to have. We have two high schools now, so I don't know what the tickets are going on, but if we're talking about lost revenue, that may be a way to recapture it of just having a juvenile court clerk and we can handle all the Montgomery High School ones anyway.
And that's something I do plan to speak to our court administrator about and look into what the pluses and minuses of that. And Julie did bring it to my attention earlier, so we will follow through with looking into that.
You have to also note that at this particular time, all those tickets go to Judge Max Court. Whatever ticket's written in those, in those schools go to Judge Max Court.
It doesn't matter if they're written in the city limits or not?
Absolutely.
But from what I understand, the only reason they're going there is because we don't have a juvenile clerk. If we had a juvenile clerk, if it was written inside the city limits, from my understanding, they could come to the city.
Well, they could, but actually there was an arrangement made between the school and Judge Mack. I understand years before I got here, but you're right. We would have to change that where we would send those to our court. And that's a conversation I had with Judge Mack when I first got here, both him and the, and the school district. But just to let you know, that's where they're all going right now this time.
And the other thing, Richard, I didn't ask you about, is there a way to consider even now putting up the stop sign at Old Plantersville and Womack Cemetery? I mean, we've been running police detail out there for multiple years. We've put in road humps. We've done everything to slow down traffic except drop a stop sign. Is there a way to drop a stop sign at that intersection?
That's, I guess I'll look into with the police chief and what, you know, what the requirements are and whether that would be more beneficial or less beneficial. I'm happy to look into that.
Yeah, we've been, we've been presently working that area both morning and evening. Because we got a call from Councilman Cronin last week. Seems like every year they start speeding in that area. I think already to date, we've probably written about the six or seven citations over there. So we'll continue to work that area, but we'll take, wow, we'll get with Richard and we'll take a look at. So we'll continue to work that area, but we'll take, while we'll get with Richard and we'll take a look at and see about a stop sign in that area, just to see if it's feasible.
Yeah, I just thought it'd be cheaper and more better use of the city's funds to have an arbitrary stop sign there, which would immediately slow down the traffic, because you have to come to the stop, assuming that they're going to stop than to have our paid officers constantly patrolling it. But the, there's been a huge presence of police and we significantly see it and appreciate it back here. Some of you may know and most of you don't know, I don't know, but you know, we've had car accidents and head-on collisions and young children paralyzed because of the, the speed, the speed. It's just a big straightaway, lots of fun times on the back road. So we appreciate the help.
Yeah, and that area is definitely a concern to us that we, we have been discussing here at City Hall, especially with potential development, increasing traffic out there.
Yeah, 4,700 more cars, yeah.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else for the counsel inquiry.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. It is 7:33 PM and we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful week.
Thank you.
Good night.